Five, four.
So the, if you look at your list, and what I shared with the committee is, I'll start at the top. Number one, the CTE shop ventilation is part of the grant. The two and three, the HVAC control and the heating plant at Avis, that is the project that the board already approved capital project funds. That's already underway. Summer of twenty twenty-four. Um, the, or sorry, number four at Sal, um, the heating plant at Sal. Still outstanding, the domestic water heater at Sal is part of the grant. Um, ventilators and air handlers and exhaust fans at Avis are part of the grant. Um, and then if you go down to summer, the next, uh, the next list, the air conditioning at Sal. At the pool and refrigeration unit at the middle school. It not, the air conditioning does not fall under the grant guidance. Something that qualifies, and it was connected to an athletic facility. There's a pool, the work at the pool does not qualify, so we left that out. The kitchen refrigerator at the middle school, that failed during this school year. Already take care of that, that's off of the list. And then, as I said, the air, the chillers and air conditioning, not in the grant. So largely, the first chunk at the top. That's was originally listed as summer of twenty twenty-four, is inside the grant that I'm working on. I did today get, um, I'm starting to get back the letters of support from our representative. Part of that application process. Um, I did get Carla's here, she sent me some reports that have data from their work on the different buildings. That will be included as justification. And Mr. Burkhardt's also working on getting the estimates of what we're asking for. All that'll come together next, twelve days until the deadline. But all of that will be part of the grant, so that the board can see that we are continuing to work on what Mr. Wall and I have established as priorities.
Any, I mean, I think we almost have to wait to see if the grant's approved before we move on with anything. And then come back and address items that maybe were not approved and go from there with some more recommendations that were taken from the Hunt feasibility study.
Dr. Omar, did you say number three under summer of twenty twenty-five was completed? Okay.
That, that was completed because it failed.
And then the twenty twenty-six items, they are not covered by the grant?
No. Um, the first one, the pool boiler cannot be because they consider that an athletic space. And we didn't put, uh, we were, we weren't convinced, I wasn't convinced based on the trainings for the grant that I went through, that chillers would be considered, chillers and air conditioning would be considered a qualifying expense.
Okay, any other, any other questions on that?
So assuming that two out of the top nine projects are underway and approved. The other listed items are on the grant. Uh, what are we looking at as far as cost for the remaining, remainder, summer twenty-five and summer of twenty-six projects?
I'm doing some quick math. Um.
We had a list of some.
It would be, you would, to take all of, to finish all of these things, you would be looking at two point three million of what isn't currently in the grant or already done.
Anything else? Okay, let's, we'll do this here, let's, let's move on to the, I'd rather go to the selling of the lots at Avis and Saliesburg. That would be D, board input on selling off the property. We, did, did they get the maps of?
I have copies of the maps that I can pass around. Hold on, let me find all my papers.
We had these guys at the last committee meeting, I don't know who brought it up, really, Mike, or somebody else brought it up here, but the selling of the lots up at Avis, I think there's like seventy-two, seventy-seven acres up there, including woodland. I think Mr. Wall said there's some nice lots back behind the school. And then we also discussed the selling of lots, whether, whether the board wants to move forward with selling of these lots. They're, they're not actually doing, the school district's any good, sell it off and get them out there and get them on the tax roll if they could. Did you, Joe, you have any discussion on that? Any thoughts on it, Mike?
So, so to be clear, are we looking to break it down and sell it off in lots, building lots, or just sell the whole parcel?
I think we probably have to look at, maybe have somebody come in and look at, see whether we want to go with selling it off. If we sell it off in lots, depends on how many we have, we might have to go through a subdivision. Mr. Wall, you have any comment on that? I don't know how many lots you have to have before you go into a subdivision, you have to put in roads and water and electric and everything else. If we just sell it off in one parcel?
Matter, matter of what we do, working with two counties here, like common county. One thing we're holding, first look.
Will you make recommendations, right motion?
Portion of this plan, one sub of the board. And come back to the county, both move forward. Kind of a lot of work we do, something like property, have to develop a property, whether, matter of where, other like that we have. Who would need, first thing, by how the lots we can look at. Access to the property, both are buried halfway. Sewage, Saliesburg is definitely going to be, need to have. Um, further, obviously no, that's a very, parts of the land. That's pretty much, always very dangerous. Um, without. Process to add one to, I think that's. Um, they could be, say. That's all something. Hire a surveyor. Do lots and then we put them up. Talked it, asked the, the, two.
Mark, in your opinion, um, and for those that don't quite know where these two properties sit. Um, Saliesburg, you kind of just give us the layout of the land and what may be around it. Um, that might entice people to buy that land, like is it buildable, is it sellable, is there already a development there? Those sorts of things.
In my own opinion, looking at the backside of the warm range. There could be a pretty nice subdivision there, and I think we could probably gain access. And right of that, kind of backside of Saliesburg, probably have another access. But I was.
This is the letter.
Okay, this is the, probably, first property.
And would they be in the back of the property where what is known as Charles Development is currently sitting? It would be off of that location?
Look at that map with the purple, purple coming down. Might be an opportunity.
And you said about three to four? Thank you.
I think this is all as we. But.
Just, I mean, I'm going to add something to it, I, I think we had talked about this, and I think it came about because of when we sold the Nipponos Valley School. We'd ever decide to close one of the, one or two of both these schools down. When we sold the Nipponos School, we sold it as a whole parcel. I think there was twenty-two acres there that went with that school. Instead of selling that, the people that bought it ended up selling that twenty-two acres where, I believe they got fourteen thousand an acre for it. So they were pretty smart, and we should have probably held on to that acreage and sold that separately and sold the building as one entity rather than combine the two of them. So that's what we're looking at here, maybe selling these lots off beforehand, or whatever we want to do. So, um, maybe come up with something we can take back to the board at the next meeting. We want to look into this further and to.
Would it be fair to say, based on what Mr. Wall just told us, that in order, the board would have to be okay with an outlay of money upfront in order for it to be lots? Is that what I'm hearing?
If, if that's the way it has to go, I mean, look into what has to be done, maybe to get rid of these lots.
I mean, I've.
Like, so whether you have to go through a subdivision or what?
You have taken that for already. Basically, that would be, have somebody. Have some, both these property. Kind of, you know, we didn't sell property if we sold portion of that property. I'm still township for a dollar, but even going back a little bit, per, we'll have to give, per test and all that, I'm okay back to me. Yeah, we had to do all that.
And we incurred that cost? Okay.
You're, you're, you're talking about perk test before you sell a lot, that's to be perk approved, right?
And it can go further, depends on what category, from, depending on what they put in. Don't even want to put it to, it was, to add it, or to add it. Probably where Saliesburg, not Avis. Oh, it's.
I, I don't know which, what direction to go here, I mean, selling a lot's very feasible, but I mean, you're going to have to do some checking and see what, what per acreage you need and stuff, if you, I'm sure you need a perk test to, to sell a lot to somebody, that's definite. And the perk tests aren't that expensive. But, uh, you have to put in everything else, utilities, roads and things like that, then it might get a little costly. You might want to sell something as, as one lump sum there, the whole parcel as one, rather than dividing into four or five lots, maybe sell it as one, one big lot, it depends, depends on what the cost we have to incur.
Primary thing I need to know before moving ahead is how many lots that we have. Everybody's comfortable with this buffer that's around here, look at the box. It wants to, look at five, I'll definitely.
Are you talking Avis or Sal?
Um.
So, so if you look at the pictures that I handed out, there, Mark drew a line, not the property line, the red line that he drew around each of the buildings, was his estimation of where he thought we'd kind of want to buffer around the building. And then anything beyond that would be property we could look at dividing off. I think what he's saying is, are you comfortable with that?
I, I'm comfortable with the buffer that he has there. I, myself, I would like to see, like, what it would cost to get the surveys done, or whatever we have to do to split this out. And then we can talk about what we want to do from that point on.
So before we put the cart before the horse, do we even know what the price of acreage is like currently?
We, we have a pretty good idea, I think, I think Mr. Wall stated to us what one lot sold up there for. Most lots are going for fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, I think he came up with one that actually sold for more than that, up in that Avis area. So, again, it depends upon where the lot is and.
What size they are.
What's, what size it is and whether it's perking everything else. So what, the utilities, how close they are to sewer systems, a lot depends on that, but you'd be, you'd probably be looking at minimum fifty to seventy-five in that range, I would think, Mark, right? Might get lucky and get more.
Depends on, depends on how somebody, they'll, I guess.
Right, the other, the other thing I think is, uh, I'm not too sure, I know back years ago, we sold some lots off out there at Avis to have a tap for humanity or something like that, but it, I'm not so sure, I think you had to sell them off through an auction at that time. I don't think the school district could actually advertise them and sell them, maybe you can now, I think.
That's how they.
Right. Thought that was a sealed, was that a sealed bid back then?
I believe it was.
With the, with the option, like you said, not to, not to sell. So, get some, anything from this, from this committee, we want to take it back and make our recommendations to the.
Let me ask a question, Harry.
We, you have a question, Ted?
Yeah, looking at Avis map, says there's seventy-five acres there, roughly, right?
Seventy-five, seventy-seven, something around there.
Seventy-seven, whatever. Mark, how much is the buffer zone, the building in the buffer, how many acres is that of the whole? Yeah, how ma, how many acres are we talking about getting rid of versus keeping for the school?
Probably, if I had to guess that, say thirty, thirty-five acres.
Okay, so thirty acres, sell acre lots, that's thirty lots.
If you can sell.
If you, so if you're selling them, yeah, if you sell an acre lot, that's thirty lots. So if you can get forty or fifty per lot, that's a pretty good deal. I wouldn't think selling one or two lots would be worth your time, but if you're going to do it, do it.
I can't find that out, if it was something like that. Or the subdivision, almost like. Reach out to him and ask him to back it on that. That involves a lot of, still all the utilities.
Yeah.
A lot of money we have to put, but I asked him, talked last week, look in the district. Mine's cost to get it done and make the most of my money.
Did he say the size of the lots would be two acres or what?
That's where we, kind of the property.
Right.
Where the property is wide or not, a great, a lot of opportunity to, you know, put it in the end without costing a lot of money.
Sorry. So, would it be advantageous to invest in a realtor who maybe specializes in land sales to look at our maps? And, you know, say, this is how I would break it out if it was mine? You know what I mean, it's, to just say thirty-one acre lots, you know, that's probably not.
I agree with that, but the only thing I don't agree with is what, what we would have to pay to do that. I think the first initial thing is, we need to do is the soil samples to see what actually can be done, and then go from there.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if you go to, go through a realtor like that, you make, might make some type of agreement that you, you agree to sell those thirty, thirty-one acres lot, whatever they think you have, that they would have the right to sell those lots and maybe no upfront cost for actually doing that survey or that, tell us how many lots we had. I mean, we're something out, maybe, I don't know if you want to go that route, but I agree with you, Mark, I think we need to do some testing and maybe come up with your ideas first, go through the townships and stuff and see what we need for acreages and stuff for a lot. And I know that stuff, place up there, Avis is really wet, but you did it long enough there, that's.
It is, really.
Building, yeah, you can always drain water and stuff, but it would take, would take a lot of work.
That's the thing, it might go from, you know, it might go from a lot of money we're thinking to not a lot of money just by those observations and testing.
I mean, it doesn't, to, to me, it doesn't pay if you, if there's a lot of water, you can't drain it out, if people are interested in that, it doesn't pay to, I would say, sell it cheap just to get rid of it, when with the price of land and stuff like that, down the road, you don't know what it's going to be worth. It might be something comes out there, it might be able to take care of that drainage problem or something like that, the rural city out there might be able to do something and the land, lands, air is getting valuable. So, might pay the whole, but we can cross that bridge down the road once you find out some more information. Would that be agreeable with you guys, maybe, uh, put it on the agenda for next week? And to, to have Mark research it a little bit and get back to us on it?
Well, we can re, we can research now without the board voting and come back with, uh, this is what it's going to have to. Like, I, I already sent a message to the solicitor, because I want him to also give you input on what are your selling avenues? Because I think there, you, you have some restrictions, but I think you could have a picture of what the selling avenues look like. Mark could give you some proposals on what, I think we also, we need like a step-by-step of what would have to get done in order for you to go that route, because based on his conversation with me, if you were to sell off a chunk of lots, as Mr. McDonald described, you might be far, way too deep into a development plan than you want to be.
Throwing it out there.
No, I.
That was my first initial.
I appreciate that perspective, but I, I think what Mark found out was.
You have to do a small chunk to save the cost upfront, but then is it worth all that time to do a couple of lots? What is, what's it going to gain longer?
It was brought up about these being wetlands, are any of these protected?
I can tell you, what, what, Avis is definitely wet, and I don't, Saliesburg, and that's a whole nother conversation I had with, with DEP. Any hundred-year, there's just so many, it's senseless for me to sit here and talk about, there's just so many things that through the process that could be a stumbling block for us.
But none of the Clinton County, the Avis property is actually protected wetlands?
I don't know that for sure.
Yeah, if you do your investigation and stuff like that, maybe, we may not even be feasible to, to sell a lot. It may be sell because I, I know, like you said, they are wet. I'm not that familiar with Sal, I don't care enough, but.
It's not wet, it's just steep, a lot of it is steep and wooded on the south end.
All right.
I know, I can tell you, the last, when we did timber that property off, there was some interest from, from the property, from, I believe it would, might have been D C N R at the time for, I don't know what they would have, but they, they contacted me at the time and just asked if there's anything we're going to do with it, let them know. Um, nothing came out of that, but.
Okay, anything else on that? We'll wait till you're back, I guess, and then proceed from there. Okay, the la, the last thing for discussion item was funding all these projects. And again, if you go to athletic facilities, if you go to these renovations, we're, we're looking at. You look at the renovations for the middle school, Avis Elementary, Saliesburg Elementary, you're looking at forty-two thousand dollars, or, I'm sorry, forty-two million dollars.
It's on page two of what I just gave them. Here. What's that?
Forty-two thousand, I feel like this part of the day.
Forty million, I corrected myself. Like, when I asked you, they said twenty, twenty-five percent of, wow.
Don't say that again.
No, I won't. I'm ten, not here to correct me.
I will.
So, we're simply looking at forty-two million dollars worth of repairs from Hunt, from Hunt feasibility study. And I think, I don't know what the settlement is here, Jersey Shore Middle School East or?
It's a very, it's a very similar, what you have on this, yeah. What you have on here is a different rendition of what you have over there.
These probably priorities that are picked out by SiteLogic, I believe. The middle school, twenty, twenty, twenty million dollars for the middle school, Avis, fifty, five point seven million. Saliesburg sixteen point six million. We don't have any money, so somehow we have to fund these projects. And we can nip one dime, just start from up with some things that Dr. Omar mentioned at the last meeting. We can raise taxes, we can do different things. One thing we can do, I'm going to mention it, it's going to come up, we can close the school. I'm looking at a deficit of a budget of almost nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And again, I don't want, I don't want to be disrespectful to anybody, but if the previous school board would have closed the school upon the recommendation of Dr. Omar, the administration and the teachers, I believe, I call a little bit of it, maybe I'm wrong, recommending to close Sal up there, we would be looking at probably a two hundred thousand dollar deficit right now. I'm going to read you a little bit from SiteLogic, whom this board hired last year. You have it in front of you there, you hired them to do a study and they're doing our workforce here, I'll go down to the bottom there. They talked about some of this funding, they said this, this, that study that the references from before that they gave us, it references more than, this is for the audience also. There's a reference to more than thirteen million dollars of anticipated works needed at Saliesburg within the next five years. And a potential for millions more shortly thereafter. If I'm looking at this sheet here, I actually see, I believe, sixteen point six million within the next few years. This is a conjunction with more than twenty-three million dollars worth of identified needs at the middle school over the next five years, which we said. This may push the district into debt service, which means we already talked about maybe going after a bond. I think we're going to have somebody come in and talk to us about that. So this may push the district into debt service and millage increases that could be avoided, listen to this, by maintaining less buildings, maintaining less buildings through increased operational efficiency as evidenced by the Hunt study. So to me, that tells me we're going to maintain less buildings, eliminate this. Saliesburg has sixteen million dollars worth of repairs. We can't eliminate the middle school, we don't have another middle school to work with, no place to put these kids. So if we're looking at Saliesburg, we can eliminate sixteen point six million dollars right away by closing that school. And that's the recommendation of SiteLogic that you people hired. And if I remember, and again, I'm not picking on Sal, but it says it right here, we had a meeting with Damian, I think Mr. Burke Hoder. If I get the name.
Burkhardt.
Burkhardt, I'm sorry, that's all right, we got a lot of people in mind.
You also have Mike, you also have Mike Arnold online who's with us from SiteLogic.
Okay, if I go back to meeting that we had in Dr. Omar's office, I think Michelle was there and myself, I think Mr. Wall, Damian and Mr. Burkhardt. It was specific, I think Damian mentioned that we should definitely close Saliesburg. That was the school of his mansion, any comment?
That probably came more directly from me, but yes, we were both in the room, yeah.
You made the comment.
Yeah.
Oh.
I see him a different perspective because of a former superintendent of thirteen years, I'm also on the school board. So, you want me out here?
Sure.
They won't be able to hear you out there if you're not in a microphone.
Is this live?
Just give it, give us a little, give us a little backup support of what we're looking at here as far as the seventeen million dollars.
Yeah, I, I consult for SiteLogic, but I also was a superintendent for thirteen years, and I'm currently in the Danville School Board as well. Uh, I understand the emotions that surround closing a building. I don't want to be disrespectful to anyone, but that was written from our company and I signed it, and I want to stand behind what was written. I know back in, uh, April, I believe, of last year, you had a recommendation from Dr. Olmer to close the building. Your board has changed. Prices continue to change, a lot of things happen. Uh, and I'll, I'll keep this brief, but when you're looking to close a building, you're looking at, first of all, operational efficiency. You're looking at debt capacity and cash on hand. You're looking at programmatic change. You're looking at obviously space. Uh, taking those things into account, uh, again, and understanding how difficult it is, I've been in some of these, actually more than I care to remember. Uh, Dr. Olmer made a, a recommendation, and I concur. Uh, I believe our company has, has provided a lot of information based upon the Hunt study, so this is all independently validated. This is just our company, this is both of us, and it does seem the prudent thing to do. These are decisions boards make. We don't make them. You ask us to give our assessment, I think we've given it. I'm telling you where I stand and how I feel about it. Understanding and respectful of other opinions. Is that what you're looking for?
Any, any questions for him, for us? Mike, did you have one? Your board?
The thing that concerns me about any, all of this is the fact that we never know what enrollment does around here. So, it goes up, it goes down. It, you know, it's gone down over the past few years, yes, but the other thing is, is I don't see out of all of this, I don't see an exact plan as to what we're thinking about doing here. Right, we've been talking about this, we've been talking about selling poss- possibly selling land off. We've been talking about, well, we've already dumped money into both schools now, both outlying schools, so we've got, you know, a million dollars in each one, basically, roughly. Uh, but the, the, the safety thing is another thing that I have about both schools, outlying schools. Uh, and you guys know that, because we talked about that, but, uh, I think that we, we should look at that aspect before we close something down also, before we decide which one we would do. Uh, because of the layout of, of the schools, but to me, we got a couple of things that we need to look at prior to saying we're gonna just close something down without surveying between the group of us, between this committee, I, in my opinion.
Again, if you look at the enrollment, you, you say the last couple of years, but, you know, I know the enrollment has been dropping for many, many years. And I, I don't have it in front of me now, but I know the state, I talked to you about it, Dr. Olmer about it, where the state projected that the enrollment is gonna go down like one, two percent, I forget what it was. Safety issues out there, uh, safety out of Avis as far as police forces considered. To get, get up the south there, the police force or something, that is gonna be a lot less available than it would be in, in the town here. Ah, man. I mean, you, I, we gotta make a move on it. I think we have enough members on the board that we can, we can make this go. I mean, you're looking at eight hundred, eight hundred some thousand dollars. I would like to have Dr. Olmer come back, maybe at a meeting before we make a decision, maybe give us a new update on this stuff. The enrollment and, you know, what the cost savings would be and things like that. But, uh, you know, if you're looking at eight hundred some thousand dollars, like I said, the deficit this year would be down. It's about time we move on this. We've been discussing it ever since I've been probably twenty-two years old, maybe. Maybe a little block, it must be a long time, it saves, about time you put it to bed. Uh, next year's budget will be affected by that. Let's, let's go back to, uh, Nipponos. Two thousand thirteen, we closed it. It was projected savings of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I, I was there.
You mean the sale that you botched for, what was it, fourteen thousand dollars an acre?
Right.
That we should have gotten, but didn't. So, let's not jump the gun.
That's, that's.
Let's make sure we have all of our eggs in the basket correctly this time.
Okay, well, we still, we still, we still can go on with closure, discussing or whatever. We, we just have to decide whether we're gonna sell the lots off beforehand or keep it with us, if we want to go that direction. But let me go back to my reference of Nipponos there. It was a savings of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was in two thousand thirteen. This is ten years later. With inflation and stuff, that had to have gone up. Let's say seven, eight hundred thousand dollars maybe averaged out over the ten, eleven years from thirteen to twenty-four now. That's might have been the average of savings. If you take that times ten years, you're looking at seven million dollars that we saved, seven, probably minimum, by closing that school down. If we did do that, that deficit we're looking at in the budget of nine hundred and some thousand dollars would be probably be seven point nine million dollars. And I've talked to Ben about that. He agrees with me a hundred percent. May be a little off, it may be a little more. But the money we saved, I mean, we were looking at a real big deficit, agree?
Certainly appears to be that, yes. I don't know if we have the exact figures, but there's definitely some operational savings.
Like Bill said the other day, it's a no-brainer, and you, Kayla, you're right, we got to put our ducks in a row here and make sure we go the right direction here, but and we can save a lot of money instead of nickel and dime, and somebody, I mean, you yourself were not happy with, uh, somebody was not happy with the budget cuts that Dr. Olmer made and stuff like that. Again, their nickel and diamond stuff, this is, this is the big item.
So, Harry, then I recommend, um, because what I see in front of me that Dr. Olmer has presented today is the current summer, we're going into this summer. Part of it has already been approved, part of it were under grant, like, grants. So then, summer of twenty-five, one of those projects has already been done, and then we would need to find eighty thousand dollars for what he is proposing that we do in the summer of twenty-five. Summer of twenty-six, you're looking at one point three five eight million. Now, that is not forty-two million that we need to complete a multi-universe renovation. So, if that is how that we're going, then I would like to see a plan for the next five years, the next ten years. Where do we sit? Like, we have these papers that we've gotten with the list of everything. Acceptable, alarm, caution, alarm, acceptable. I would like to see more of this then on this paper before we meet with Jamie Doyle about floating a bond for first.
My, my, my first thought of that is, we can't meet with Jamie Doyle and have any conversation about borrowing money until we figure out what money we're gonna put up to borrow the money. Right now, we can't borrow money. We have no money to give her to start the process.
And Kayla, oh, I'm sorry. Can you just be on specific, and when you say your sheet that you held up, like, what is it that you're looking for?
Which one?
The one from Dr. Olmer today? The other one, like, in the next, you said that you were looking for specifically the next five years in essence.
Yes, so with what Dr. Olmer gave us today, was for the next, was for this current summer and the two summers after. So, I know, because I have these papers, that not all of this is on, you know what I mean? Like, it's in here, but not everything that's in here is on here.
Correct.
Right.
So, this is a good starting point.
Mm-hmm.
But what about, so, let's see. What about something that is not the Avis Chillers, but has an alert next to it, or an alarm next to it, that should be completed? Like, I understand that this is what they recommended be done. But this says, like, um, ending in the year of life. Okay, so, is that recommended then for, like, should it be done twenty-twenty-six, or should it be done twenty-thirty? Like, that sort of thing, more defined so that we know. Okay, so, next summer really isn't eighty grand. We should really be working out four million.
So, if you go to the, the letter that you have, go to page two. So, on page two, they have the alarm column, and they have down below the subtotal of the alarm column is ten point two million, and their timeline is now. And that alert is thirteen point four, and you should be thinking about those in the next one to two years. So, I think what you're asking for is, you want to see what all the things are under alarm and what all the things are under alert in one document.
I would, yes.
Okay.
All right, you just gotta take that sheet that she had there, the list of everything, and separate them out somehow.
That's how we would do it, is.
That's fine.
Just reformat it.
We're gonna reform it to, here's all the red and here's all the yellow. It's a sort, yeah.
I just had a comment, um, from Mr. Burkhardt. I really appreciate
Thank you.
all of, all of your time and effort in what you've sent us, and including in this letter, the, on the second paragraph, when I read on your first line of the second paragraph, about determining the long-term viability of the buildings, I think that's where, as a board, we have to make a determination on, and take into account all that you have given to us in determining, well, what is that long-term viability? And when you look at the financial piece of the long-term viability of the buildings, that's the part, obviously, that is missing in order to sustain them on, in the next five to ten years. We don't have the financial ability to do that. So, in saying that, um, that's why I asked you, Kayla, like, what specifically you were looking at, because we hired your firm to do something very specific and to give us your professional opinion, which you did do. And I know in that meeting when I sat with you, and I had asked this specific question to you, I had asked you, well, in a perfect world, what would it take to make, um, all of our buildings, so to speak, you know, efficient? And you said, oh, well, this is the paper you had handed to us. And then I remember asking you specifically, well, would you take all of the money that you suggested? And put them back in to all of the buildings that we currently have?
Right.
And I remember between you and, and Damian saying, no. And so then from there, when I had asked, well, what about the middle school? Twenty-three million dollars worth of upgrades and repairs is necessary for a long-term viability. And I remember asking, well, could we build a new middle school? Is that even possible? When you told me that number, which I remember.
Four hundred square foot, I believe it was. That came from Damian.
Yeah, I think he quoted me like forty-five million dollars just to build the building. That's not to furnish it.
All the extra costs.
He's, then he said, I think it was sixty-four, sixty-five million dollars to have it functional. And then he referred to this small community and saying how he didn't believe that this community could support something of that nature, which I totally agreed. And I think, now coming back to just remembering on that conversation, looking at all that you have given to us here, um, and in your professional opinion, telling us, no, I probably wouldn't dump all of that money that is required back into one of those specific buildings because of long-term viability. It won't be worth your time, effort and money to do so. And I greatly respect that. I know that wasn't probably something you want to tell people, um, but I wanted to know, because in the past, when I've sat on the board and tried to figure out from a professional opinion, um, I feel like that piece was always missing.
It's, it's hard to find the path.
Yeah.
Without doing it this way. Uh, maybe there's a way, maybe there's some creative accounting, financing, something, but it really is hard to see how you're able to do everything that you need to do. Your middle school has, has great needs. All your kids go there. You have to have one.
Yeah.
Your elementary is, you could go to a lower level if you choose to do it. I don't live in Saliesburg. I understand the emotions it prompts. I I've seen them in districts where I've worked, where I live. They're difficult decisions. I would only urge you, don't let it take you apart. Uh, don't divide by this. You ask great questions. You're diligent as a board. You research well. You have a great young superintendent. It's not personal. Make the decision that's right. And that's what we see.
Well, thank you very much.
Carla, did you wanna, I know you stepped up when we were talking about the list. Did you want to add to that conversation?
Well, when I was, I thought, um, because she wanted to have like a core of a long-term kind of buckets of what needs to be done. I provided you that for a middle school over a month ago.
Yeah.
In a facility, just for a middle school.
Just for the middle.
I remember that the very last year, we were talking about like parking lots and sidewalks. So, we developed that, uh, kind of like, uh, was it a year, a year? Yes, it was a year, a year, for like.
For the middle school, yes.
Seven years.
Yeah.
Individual improvement, so, uh, just for a middle school, because we, uh, that's the school with me, one of them.
So, what I can do is I can share, they gave me a sample of, like, it's just middle school, what, like, a three-year project could look like. Would it help you to visualize it to see, it's not every building, but it's middle school, at least it would give you a.
Yeah, because in all reality, the middle school is going to have to stay functional, no matter what. Like, we, we do not have capacity anywhere else to move six, seven and eight to anywhere, so it's going to have to stay functional. So, we're not going to sink whatever it was twenty-three million dollars into it and it be repaired in the summer. Not feasible. So, I would like to see that plan stretched out. When is this go, you know, what are, what's the timeline? What could the timeline look like?
When you see that plan, Kayla, you'll see how they developed it from basically working in the interiors of the building, all the major work, it phased through summers, and then they're basically working theirself right out of the building to do the outside of the work. You'll see that, won't you?
That would, would be beneficial.
Mike, are you there?
Yeah, I believe Mike handed that out to the committee and then needed to collect it and update it.
I thought so, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought I remembered that, and I just wanted to check.
Yep.
Yes, well, Mike.
But we can get it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Wayne. Did you, you were asking about the, the phasing of the, of the project?
Yes.
Yeah, I think what we, what we did was we tried to, um, uh, identify a path that would be logical. Um, based on the priorities, obviously, but also for phasing to make sure we're not impacting the educational function in a, in a big way, and obviously, we would execute most of the work, um, during the summer, uh, so that we're not, um, you know, holding up, uh, the, the classes, et cetera, but that's a, you know, that's something that's gonna take a lot of time, um, to meet with the administration, make sure that, um, you know, everyone understands, you know, what would be happening and making sure that we're coordinating all those efforts.
But, and Mike, what I, I think what I'm hearing is, they would like to see, even if it's not a final plan, what it potentially could look like, so they can wrap their head around if we went, if we went forward with a building project, here's what it could look like. Am I?
Yes, and my follow-up on that. Would it even be feasible? Clearly, I do not believe that we could close Saliesburg for next year.
No.
At this point, no.
No.
When in your timeline would you see that happening? Because again, you're moving, you don't have room
Right.
to moving kids. Is there going to be grade reconfiguration with the new middle school? Is there going to be? What are the other pieces to this? Because I know this is not just, I mean, I couldn't fathom this just being a remodel of a school.
Right. When you say not for next year, you mean twenty-four, twenty-five, correct?
Right, yeah, there's no.
So, twenty-five, twenty-six is something that would be the first that would possibly be on the table.
Even possible.
Yeah, and again, I'll refer to Mike when you get into the level of detail of how long construction phase would take. That's probably better for, for Mr. Arnold to answer, if he can still hear us.
Yeah, no, no, I, I think, I think these, these are great questions. I think what we would need to provide for you, uh, is kind of like a master. I think what we would need to provide for you is kind of like a master, a master plan, a master schedule that identifies what components would be under renovation during the various years and then when, when are the strategic moves made? How are, you know, the, the grades grouped from, you know, during the course of the renovation until it is a hundred percent complete? Because it could be, it could result in, you know, multiple moves or, you know, hopefully, we can minimize all of that. But I think that's, that's, uh, that would be a good document for you to review and, and take a look at. And again, it's gonna, it's gonna be a, um, based upon, you know, the input that we get from the administration, the principals, et cetera. But obviously, it's always, you know, somewhat fluid because we have to work out the kinks of that and, and work, work through it through time. So we can, we can definitely provide that.
So Mike, this question is probably for you as well. On this paper that Wayne handed out today, Mr. Brookhart, with the alarm and the alert, there is a timeline of now and one to two years. And even for now, for Saliesburg, um, it's a eight-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-dollar project. You get that up to enough for this year. So this goes back to when you guys presented the last time is keeping our kids warm, safe, and dry. How many, how much of this money are we going to have to put forward to keep that building operational, to keep our kids warm, safe, and dry while you guys are still tackling the middle school?
Yeah, we, we definitely have to go through line and by line of it as far as what makes up that eight-hundred-some-odd-thousand to determine, you know, what, what many projects on that absolutely have to be executed to keep them warm, safe, and dry as opposed to those that could possibly be deferred and ultimately not ever accomplished if, if you do decide to close. So that's something, we'll, we'll, we'll do a, a comprehensive review of that list and, and provide some input back on that very, very, very quickly. We have all the data. That's the good news. It, it, it really, what it sounds like, it comes down to how that data is organized to help, help everyone to understand what it means and, and to be able to make educated decisions. I think we started that process with the middle school and will continue to do that.
We have a lot of, a lot of information here. We've got a lot of people committed for several years now. We've always had the hunt study to start us off, which really helped.
And we appreciate that. But like you said, it's, it's gathering the data and because this isn't a cut and dry situation. This is not shutting down a bu- building with a brand-new one waiting for us in the wings. Like, it's just, it's not.
Right. Yeah, we can offer any assistance too with type of things that you'll deal with, Dr. Almer, with kids moving and that type of plan, whatever you need. We're here.
So I'm hearing you want to see a five-to-ten-year sketch of what their processes would look like moving forward. Is that what the board is asking for?
I just, I just have a question. I'm looking at this second page here. It says now one to two, three to five. From three to five years, working at thirteen million? Am I looking at, am I looking at forty-two million? Forty-two, right?
You have to add the bottom column going across.
Forty-two million, forty-two million dollars in five years to take care of these three schools. Like you said before, if, if the one school is gonna cost you sixteen, I don't know, we're coming up with thirteen now, but one, one doc's gonna add sixteen, seventeen million on it for, for Sal. It's something, I mean, that would cut our expenses down drastically. So in, why go on ten years if you already have it out five years at forty-two million dollars? Am I, am I misreading you?
Because, Harry, we have other schools in the district that are gonna also need things. We have to maintain the high school as well. We have to maintain Jersey Shore Elementary as well.
Right.
This, the packet that he gave us is not just.
Yeah, there's some green on that packet as well.
There is some green and there's going to be less maintenance at Jersey Shore because it's newer. However, like, how long are you gonna drive that doc's in? Eventually, it's gonna fall apart. So even if we don't use it in thirty, thirty-five, that money should be planned to be there, renovate in thirty, thirty-five, or soon thereafter. So that we're not kicking, we don't, aren't looking for funds. We're not scrambling to sell off parcels of ground. We're not looking to raise taxes to the index multiple years in a row. Like, that's, you need to plan for the future. I would like my kids to continue to go to school in this district, not.
Well, I feel like one of the ways that we can accomplish that, and then I feel like most likely the only way we're going to be able to accomplish that is we're going to need to borrow money. But in order to even borrow, we have to have a clear vision on whether or not we're closing a building. That will be, I think, the major driving force. And Dr. Almer, I would personally, as part of this committee, like to see what your plan is, that if we do close a building, what is it that it will look like where the kids from Saliesburg? How would you like to place them? Which buildings are they going to and what will that look like? Because one thing I do remember when Jamie Doyle has come to present, if we borrow money at any point in time, you're not getting it next week, nor are you getting it a few months down the road. This is something that I feel like we can't sit back on and make a decision six months from now. We are going to need to actually make some decisions and get moving.
With, with Michelle, though, we also, what they presented before in the mock-up in that binder was even with moving a certain number of kids to any building, there were also renovations then to those buildings that are holding these students. So it's, it's not cut and dry that we need just forty thousand dollars in five years to complete the projects between now and five years. Like, it's, and you're right, we are going to have to have a clear picture of what this is all going to look like over the course of, and Jamie, when she was here, what you ask for certain money and then it's allocated at different times. So when you ask for twenty million dollars, you can get ten now, you can get fifteen later and five at the end, or. So there's different avenues that we need to be able to see all of them. Sorry, Michelle, I didn't really mean to interrupt.
No, that's all right, but you're, you're.
That's kind of where my, I'm like, okay, so all of these balls are bouncing in the same court, but we gotta get them, get in control, in control of them and then shoot them at the hoop because.
Increasing operational efficiency is one of the ways that you fund debt service. In fact, there really aren't many other ways. That's about the only way you can do it right now. You'll get more money from the state, but it's usually gonna be soaked up in your year-to-year costs. So that is generally the way that districts fund debt service is through operational efficiency.
So basically, closure would, would absolutely reduce our debt service and would absolutely reduce our budget, which we're looking at a deficit right now.
It's a big step in that direction. Yeah.
As Kayla was saying, maybe go on with what we want to purchase or try to get money for and do what repairs we have to.
Numbers are what the numbers are.
Right.
Well, and I would say, I mean, I can bring Jamie Doyle in, but one of the, when she goes to create her chart, she's gonna create it based on, the first column is local effort. And what Wayne is saying is there's only a couple of ways to come up with local effort. You either have to come up with it with inside your existing budget or you have to raise taxes to increase your existing budget. And I don't think the board wants to raise taxes to borrow money to do these projects. So would, that's why I'm, I'm heading towards the painful decision of there's only one other way and it's to reduce expenses. And the, back to last week's conversation, reducing expenses that are already on the books has proven painful. So I have to come up with other avenues. And that's where we are. You're either gonna have to raise it or you're gonna have to cut it.
So then with that being said, Dr. Almer, when are you looking to close Saliesburg? Because that seems to be where you're recommending, like, how soon?
Well, we can't do it for fall of twenty-twenty-four. You can't meet the timeline. So the soonest you could do it would be fall of twenty-twenty-five. But there would be steps in that process that we would have to go through as a board.
Then how soon do you think we could even? Like, right there is, you're talking twelve months that we close the building, sit on our hands, and then hope to pray that we have enough to put forward to Jamie Doyle to get the rest of them money? Like, I feel like we're spitting in the wind here, like it's.
Well, you would, you would be building that into your twenty-five, twenty-six budget, which would start in January of twenty-five.
But that, what's, what she's saying is a year for now. Really won't be a year for now. If the board makes that decision, it's what, a ninety-day hearing process? That the way it goes and then a vote after that?
You have to have a hearing, wait ninety days, and then vote.
Right. So, okay.
Can we see where those kids, where you think those kids are gonna go?
Can put that together.
Right, that's, that's kind of what.
And how those kids are going to.
I didn't see the presentation last year. But I mean, maybe some other thing, presentation, maybe like said, an update of cost savings and where we're gonna put the kids, how we're gonna house them. And I, I understand that we have, I guess there's more classroom space at Avis than what there is at Sal and we, we do have enough room to close the school and put these kids in other schools with ample room.
Well, we definitely have the room because all of that information was already given to us. All of the information that we need to do anything has already been provided. I think it's a matter of us, in all honesty, is believing in our administration and knowing that they want what's best for this school district as well. I don't think we need to continue to gather more intel. We have what we need. We just have to make a decision. And back to what Kayla was asking for about seeing like, you know, the playing out, what I had asked you for, Dr. Almer, about what it might look like for students and, and scenarios if we do a school closure. I think that's going to be very important to the board and to the community. So if we can see that first, moving forward on what that might look like, I think that would give a good peace of, a peace of mind for some of us here. So we have, basically, it's just, we have the intel that we need from that piece on what you're recommending. And maybe you'll have more than one scenario. I'm not sure what you will, you will recommend. But I don't believe that we need any more intel, personally. I think we have what we need.
Presenting the data the way that we need it.
But if I remember correctly, Mr. Brungardt from last year, that operational cost to the building of closing Saliesburg is going to produce somewhere between six-hundred thousand and one million dollars of operational cost savings every single year.
I, somewhere I heard eight-hundred thousand.
Well, I have to, I would have to update the operational cost because those would have changed. Yep.
Okay.
Can you also refer then to, um, or give this to SiteLogic so that they can review it, see if any of the other changes need to be made to accommodate these?
I can do that.
Sure, absolutely. Take a look.
So if you look at, at closing schools, what are we going to need to do to the other schools to make this happen? That's one of my concerns.
I heard that question too. And so I will go back to what you said and, and what your concerns are and I won't reiterate them publicly, but again, I keep, in my head, I keep going back to. I don't disagree with what you're saying we need to do. But we need to come up with where is that money coming from? And that could be something that going forward, we could take those operational savings and say to them, we want you to do this. You know, in year one or in the summer before they get there. So that those concerns are gone.
Right. That's why I'm asking, uh, because you know how I feel about that.
Yeah.
So.
So I'm just gonna throw this out there, though, 'cause a lot of this conversation is referring back to last year, last year, last year. I'm not going to sit here and act like Dr. Almer did not say at the middle school, this is done. Put a nail in this coffin and move on. And I feel like now with a new board, nobody is holding what our administrator said to any, any sort of merit. He gave his recommendation. He dealt with the scenario that was chosen by the seated board and he has moved on. The district has moved on. So now I'm calling on you, Dr. Almer. Are you taking back your word? Are we moving the district in another direction again?
I will say I'm stuck because I made recommendation to close the building. I was, it didn't happen. So my counter-recommendation was I gotta raise taxes to cover the difference. That didn't happen. So now we're a year later and we have a budget deficit and I'm stuck again. Where, where do I come up with this money?
So then I'm going to refer to Ben Enders' recommendations of our business manager, who we seem to only heed certain advice that we want to. So a contract for the teachers to teach our children is too high. We can't afford it. However, we also can't heed the recommendation of our business manager when it comes to raising taxes to educate our children. That is mine.
I, I don't understand, Kayla. Raising taxes to educate our children, you're, we're raising taxes to cover the deficit, which in essence, in a roundabout way, like say, is educating our children. I mean, you, you guys okayed a five-million-dollar contract over five years for these teachers and stuff. And I mean, if I buy something, before I buy it, I know how I'm gonna pay for it. How are you gonna pay for that contract? Close the school. How else are you gonna do it? We, we tried everything. Borrow money. You, you gotta do something for it. You can't, you can't spend something and not know how you're gonna pay for it. Doesn't make sense. I, I, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not on the same page. I, I, I don't know, I don't understand it.
Nobody ever, ever, ever asked that question or blinked an eye when it came to Dr. Almer's contract?
What, what do you?
We gave him a raise. We're gonna be in conversations with Act Ninety-three right now. Are you gonna give them a raise? How about we just freeze everybody's?
I'm not gonna give them, I am not gonna say anything.
Freeze everybody's wages, then we don't have to.
Where are you gonna get the money from?
Do anything, we'll just continue.
Give everybody raises like that?
We'll continue to kick the can down the road. You have to take a little bit from everything, everything. We haven't raised taxes in how many years? And if we did, it was rebalancing. So it didn't do anything. People aren't paying more taxes, Harry. They're paying less. The majority of the people in our tax base are paying less.
I don't know, I'd have to look at the numbers.
Ben's giving you the numbers. How many times differently do you want to see them?
All I see is my tax dollars.
Yeah, and I saw mine and they decreased. I also don't own a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house. Maybe that's the issue. Live above your means.
Well, if you can afford to buy a built house like that, then you gotta learn, you know, people, people do that. People are building these five-hundred, six, seven-hundred-thousand-dollar houses nowadays. I don't know how they're gonna afford, evidently they are.
And that's on them. They're gonna have to figure out how to pay the property taxes.
Exactly right. So do we want to look at something? I would like to see something. Like I say, I didn't follow up last year with your recommendation and stuff and I would like to. and I would like to see, I don't wanna spend meeting after meeting on it. Maybe one meeting, where you can give us an update on it and.
So here's what I wrote. You wanna see a multi-year plan for facilities. You wanna see, I heard multiple options to move forward with students and part of that facilities plan. You want SiteLogic's input on that plan. You want the alarm and alert items collected into separate documents, so you can see what they are. You want, I wrote, send the board, oh, the middle school sequencing document. I was trying to read my own writing here. And then have a conversation with Jamie Doyle about what borrowing looks like. Did I get all that?
Work while having a conversation with her, you know what you're saying. You know you can't get money. Maybe work while bringing her in and just having her tell us, I guess, the options and what, what it would cost.
Yeah, I mean, she could give you a.
Reinforcing what we know.
I mean, the last time we saw her was probably over a year ago, so it doesn't hurt. I mean, she wouldn't need to come here and talk to the board as much as update what you saw over a year ago so that the current board has a sense of what the cost of borrowing money is. She can just redo the report. I'll word it that way.
Jim, Kayla, Sherry, any comments? Do you know where we're going, what's going on? Hopefully you're getting filled in a little bit better.
Trying to come up with a speed.
I only had one thing from being an outsider to all of this, is that I'm hearing, you know, why we can't, most of the conversation's coming to why can't we do what's been proposed? Well, what's the other option then to pay for what we have to pay for and to fix these buildings? Like, what else, what else is there besides what the professionals are proposing? And I find it, I'm just gonna be honest, I find it difficult, being a taxpayer and all of these years and entrusting the school to, you know, to have the feasibility studies, to, you know, have the professionals give their, their, their comments on, on what, you know, their professional opinion on what should be done. And all of this, I did have a question, was all of this information, did the, the board before November have all this information that, in this, like, right here? From SiteLogic? Is this just all repeated information?
That letter's dated April 26th of this year. But the, I'm trying to think, we had a lot of facilities information.
They had, well, I know that, they had all the money.
We had a binder of stuff.
Yeah, we had all the money that was needed for updates and repairs. That hasn't changed a whole lot. It's just gotten a little bit, and I think, bigger because it's more expensive as time goes on.
I believe your administration spoke pretty passionately last year about the needs at the middle school. Dr. Almer, is that correct? I think it was in the Williamsport Sun Gazette.
Yeah.
I remember. And I don't believe it was just you, if I remember correctly.
No.
And we've kind of been operating off of that.
That's the word, the most needs are.
Obviously with the superintendent and somewhat with Mr. Wall. We've kind of expanded a little bit this year and come in and spent a little more time with the board and committees, but we've really operated with the Hunt study, the administration, and the board somewhat. We're not here every month. We're here at your, when you need us, when you want us.
So to answer Sherry's question, Dr. Almer, when was the Hunt study completed?
2020.
When did SiteLogic come on board?
21, I believe.
2021?
I think it was 21, yeah. Yeah, Hunt was here before us.
But also to answer your question, yes. The majority of everything you have that you said, I'd say probably 95% was everything that we have seen prior to. And Jamie Doyle has been here before to propose borrowing money. On twice, once, and then Dr. Almer came to the board and had also proposed about borrowing a small amount of money. And both times, the majority of that board refused to borrow the money. So that's why you're seeing what you are. It's not that it wasn't recommended. It's not that anybody missed anything. Mr. Wall has been a tremendous asset to this district, making sure that he knows exactly what needs to be taken care of year to year. I think that, on looking back, I know hindsight's always 2020. But all of that information has always been presented to the board. And then it's up to the board to make the decisions on what to do with that information.
Okay. So what, what's Plan B then? I mean, what's, what's Plan B? I mean, I wanna, I wanna believe you, and, you know, I'm listening to everything, but what's Plan B? We just go forward and hope without taking action? I'm, I'm just, I mean, I'm, I'm looking for answers. I'm fishing for, okay, if this, if this, if we're not gonna take the direction of the professionals, then whose are we gonna take? I mean, I'm just not used to operating that way. So somebody tell me, who's got a better idea? I'm not being smart. I'm just, I'm just looking for information. I mean, I'm looking over there, but I'm not looking at you to.
I know. But I, I think that just Plan B, you know, if you don't have the money, you're going to do the minimal repairs that you can every year. I mean, that's, that's what you're gonna have to do. I don't see, I don't see where you're gonna, aside from everything we just talked about, how do you do that? I mean, maybe you get a donation from somebody to help fund something, whether it be an athletic facility, or whatever it may be, or, you know, the classrooms for the science department, whatever it may be. You know, that's, that's all you're gonna be able to do, in my mind, for Plan B. That's just my.
It still requires money. And you're not gonna get some local to donate a million dollars. I, I would hope so, but I, I rather doubt it.
No, I'm just saying, that's, you know, what do you, what is Plan B, Harry?
There, there's no Plan B to me. I, I mean, I don't know. Like I said, the only way to raise money is raise taxes, or, you know, we can eliminate $800,000 from the budget and maybe put that into what you call a contingency fund to, for these repairs and stuff, which would.
Capital reserve.
So this is my question.
Money to help, very little, but it would definitely help. I mean, it's something we, we can do without. And I would, I'd like to say, I would like to see your, your updated information on it, just to make sure. Like, see, I didn't follow up that much last year.
So my question, though, is are you prepared to do all of it?
No.
You're not prepared to raise taxes? You're not, if we borrow this money?
Different directions now.
No, because.
You're talking about, you're talking about repairs or raising taxes?
To do what SiteLogic proposes that needs to be done. Are you willing to close Saliesburg Elementary and raise taxes?
That's, that's, that has nothing to do.
Why not? You have to get money to.
I'm willing to close Sal for the simple reason it's gonna cut our deficit down, year after year. I'm looking at, I don't have a sheet in front of me now, but you keep robbing the fund balance year after year after year. The projection, I think, for three, four years, Ben said that the fund balance is coming down to zero. That's what you've been doing the last couple of years, because you haven't raised taxes. You've been robbing the fund balance.
So you are willing to close Saliesburg to cut the deficit? However, what he is proposing is on top of the deficit. So still, how are you going to get that money?
Absolutely. But you don't have to.
So you're going to have to borrow?
Borrow some money.
Raise taxes or sell land? Are you willing to do all of them?
Not necessarily all of them. I'd have to think about raising taxes myself.
Then we're still at square one, because if you close Saliesburg to cut the deficit, that money is going to be there to keep that deficit at zero. Your expenses are going to go up. The cost of paper may go up. The cost of toilet paper may go up. The cost of food may go up. So your deficit is going to continue?
Be going down, because we got rid of all those expenses out there. That's what you said.
That just covers the deficit. That covers the $900,000 that the deficit is. Are you going to have enough left over from closing one school to complete $42 million worth of projects?
Well, you know we're not going to. That's a dumb question.
So then how are you going to get the Plan B? How are you going to get the rest of the money?
When you say the rest of the money?
You're gonna have to borrow it. What else are you gonna do?
But you're willing to borrow it. Just remember, though, when you, when you borrow it, that's going, that's going to become part of our whole budget that is going, and then to pay for that budget, you are going to have to raise taxes, because there's not gonna be another school. That is what I'm saying.
If you borrowed this money years ago, you wouldn't have had to raise taxes.
Well, Harry, I wasn't on the board years ago. I wasn't on the board years ago. You were.
Me either. No, I wasn't.
You were.
Not when she came to us with, when was that? We could've borrowed all that money that we needed at, and then when the debt service, interest payments and all.
I'd have to go back and look. I think.
You could've closed all three of the schools, Harry, when you were on the board. You could've closed all three of them. You could've closed Nippono, Sal, and Avis.
That wasn't the plan.
That was the plan, and you didn't do it.
No, it fell through.
So now what? Now what's your Plan B, Harry?
I don't have Plan B.
Go with planning, right?
Well, one thing I just want to address is when closing a school building doesn't necessarily mean we're going to need to have a tax increase to raise money or offset cost. Those things, I think, in the future, Mr. Enders can speak into. But as for this teacher contract that was passed, I specifically remember Mr. Enders stating that, yes, we do have the money to afford the contract. What we also have to understand is because that, that contract was passed, you're not going to save any of the money from those retirements. And I think that's a very key piece to this board understanding how the finances work. Because outside of that, there are no other areas, unless somebody, like Harry said, gifts us money in order to save. You save on teacher retirements within the district. So I remember also, Dr. Almer, you being very specific with the board in telling us that we're not in the hole. We're not, you know, we're not going down the tube. We are gonna be able to pay for that contract. And where we sit after that, I mean, that's for Mr. Enders to be able to speak to us on, on, in the future. But I just want to be very clear that I know that's what he spoke. So we can afford that contract. We can pay for it. But there will be no money saved from those teacher retirements. I don't know if you would disagree in me stating that, but that's what he had spoke.
I remember hearing that conversation. Yes.
So in saying that, if you're not gonna save any money, then how are you going to pay for the repairs of all of your buildings and the future needs of all the items? We are going to need to borrow the money. I don't believe, like, you know, Mrs. Peters had, had asked, well, if you don't do it, what are you going to do? I don't see any other way. I don't believe there is any other feasible way. And, you know, there's many districts, I'm sure Mr. Brookhart will agree with me. Most districts live in debt. They carry debt. This is how it works.
Just like people with a home.
Correct. I don't know many people that can honestly lay down $100,000 to $150,000 in cash and buy a home and skip out of there, you know, mortgage-free. I, I, yeah, most people can't afford a car that way either. You're going to carry some debt. But that doesn't mean that our debt service is not attainable in being able to afford it. That's what we need the professional to be able to explain to us and help us out and see where we land on a debt payment.
I think until you have Ms. Doyle and, and Mr. Enders in a room, it's a little difficult to determine exactly where you'll stand with that.
And I, that's on my list to have her update that report.
That'd be great. Hopefully it'll be lower than what I'm hoping.
Michelle, what are her Plan Bs? Any other, any other comments? Tim?
Not at this time.
All right. I guess the, any other discussions? I think that was all. Have you done any courtesy of the floor?
I'm too old for all this. I think Plan B is to do nothing. Just take care of what we have. I don't agree with the architect's recommendations that we need to do this and we need to do that. I don't buy that. You don't need to do all these recommendations that the architects come up with. We just continue to take care of what we have. Closing a school, to close one of the elementary schools in order to have savings, you have to furlough all the staff. And you can't rehire. You have to furlough the staff. That's why there was no savings in the closing of Nippono, because we didn't furlough staff. And then you have to find a place for the children, 225 children in Saliesburg. Where are you going to put them? Are you gonna put them, you're gonna move them into JSE? JSE has some 490 kids now. It'll go up to over 600 children. Your class size averages go from 18 to 25 or 26. The standard classroom in this, in this school district is 850 square feet. It's designed for the optimum of 20 students, not 25 and not 30. And besides that, we have a debt. We have a building and grounds debt of what? What is it? 15 million? We're already in the hole. We can't afford any more building, building and grounds, major renovations to our school. Walked through the school, I've, on the board for four years, 17, 18, 19, 20. I've gone through these schools. They're in good shape. I maintained buildings in the state college area school district for 20 years by just taking care of what we had. We didn't have to do major renovations, and so forth. So, and as far as the enrollment, I've been tracking the enrollment now for four years that I've been on the board and the years that I've been off the board. The enrollment in the elementary division is not declining. In fact, in the elementary division, the enrollment's going up. It's gone from 960 kids up to 980. And if you look at the PD projections for the next five years for the K to 5, the enrollment is steady. In fact, it's inclining just a little bit. I'll go through some of my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if no one else, we're through the meeting, then thank you all.